We have some meeting minutes to approve from our February ninth, two thousand and fifteen regular council meeting. If there's any additions or corrections, I'll be looking for a motion after it's approved.
I make that motion.
Motion number four by Stephanie.
I'll second that.
Second by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carried unanimously. We have our agenda this evening.
You have one addition, Leon Flicker.
Leon.
Yeah. You came to talk to me, I don't know if there's a few other people in the audience.
Jimmy?
Well, I just came to say thank you for your work last week on the, or two weeks ago, on the Veterans Memorial.
Absolutely.
And I had the under impression there were going to be a resolution on the, on the agenda today, and so I thought I would come. And then I thought I'd also mention that there was some question the last time about ownership and that, and, and just to make it perfectly clear with the rest of our members, we brought it up through a meeting and passed a motion to officially donate it to the, to the city when it's finished.
Okay.
We did pass the ordinance, we had to pass an ordinance to accept Memorial into the city. Upon that, I have to run, I have to publicize that for a number of weeks and days, so the resolution will not go until effect until the ninth of March, so it's in progress.
Anybody else have anything? Does that mean agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Leon Flicker.
Motion four by Mike. Get a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carried unanimously. Leon, you want to go first or last?
No, I'll go. I just had a question. I was, I was eating here on Thursday nights at City Center, and I see a gal sit by the wall, and pretty soon they move in. And then I started asking him, I said, "Why are you moving in?" He said, "It's so cold by that wall." Is that wall not insulated than our wall or?
Leon, your guess is probably...
Bob, we turned to Bob.
Who knows?
It's a building, I really don't know.
I know.
I just see it so often. My sisters have it all at school, but they won't.
Yeah. No, your guess is, if it is, it's probably insulated poorly, just due to the age.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's insulated enough that the fire trucks didn't freeze up over there. Fierce.
The windows, they seem to be good windows, uh, but the walls seem to be cold.
Yeah, I'm sure, you know, this, really, our, our whole building is not what you call super energy efficient. You know, we, we have a lot of, of upgrades that could be made to try and make this building a little more efficient than what it is.
The heat bill runs pretty high in here.
Uh, yeah, you know, and that and the cooking and the cooling and then the heating and, yeah, I mean, the furnace we have is, they must have built a building around, because I'm not sure how we'd get it out of here. We could use a new furnace and, you know, central air and the whole nine yards in here too.
It might be, uh, it might be wise to replace the furnace.
At some point in time, I mean, we're certainly, we're certainly gonna have to.
The new furnace is that's so much more efficient.
Yeah.
They've heated themselves over the years.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
I just, I was bringing up, I was wondering, uh, anybody who, oh, well, it's insulated or probably not yet, so it's all.
Yeah, like I said, if it is insulated, it probably is not very good, is my guess.
Gosh, Leon, that was easy.
Yeah. Then they bring up something hard.
You got the floor, Mel. Thanks, Leon. Uh, we have electric rebate proposal, that's for the Morrison Coney shop.
Um, we did have this on our last agenda, um, just to do an update, they do run off the city electric rebate to show in the packets. We kind of talked about this earlier, but I just want to run this in official city council meeting.
Okay. Do you think we'll make a motion on that?
I would, being it's a, a large amount.
What is it, uh, by looking at this, right, Scott? One thousand forty-two, forty-six?
Correct, that's gonna be the rebate amount we will pay out.
And that was for, what actual type of upgrades were that, you know, right off hand?
I do not know, I don't have all the paperwork on, on hand yet. I'm assuming most it's lighting, and most of them are lighting. Um, with that being said, we are at about, between fifty and sixty percent of our goal for this year already, we're in February, so we're rocking this as our goal to the state. Um, we can start to coast now, because we're at that.
I would make a motion that we approve the energy rebate for the Morrison Coney, uh, shop buildings at one thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-six cents. Motion on the floor by Mike, can you get a second?
I second that.
Second by Matt, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carried unanimously. Uh, Scott has a workshop, uh...
I would like to schedule a workshop either for the week of, um, March, either March ninth or March sixteenth, that week, um, not those specific days, but I would request the sixteenth, which is a Monday. Here at City Hall at five o'clock.
You're looking at the sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay. I'm working everybody's, um, schedule.
That should be okay for me.
What time you thinking?
Five o'clock.
I'm sort of, I'm sure I'm gonna have to leave.
You've got plenty of time.
It's only gonna take, it's literally the two hours.
The meeting can only go so long.
I've got seven hours to work with.
March sixteenth at five o'clock.
Yep. Scott's got some NIMS stuff in that, the National Insulinet Management System.
Correct. So, um, most of you are aware of this, I just wanted to bring it up. Um, I would assume that most of you have NIMS training already, the EMS or Fire Department, Matt, you probably don't. Um, but if there is ever a natural disaster within our city, um, for us to apply for any grants or get any funding for relief, um, members of the council, mostly the mayor and the city administrator need to have the training. So, if something happened, major snowstorm came through and knocked out certain stuff, um, before we can apply for that money, we would need to be trained, so.
Yeah, and I do have the NIMS, uh, one and two hundred and the seven and eight hundred.
Actually, when it was required, way back when, we had the whole council go through it, and it was, you know, I remember, you were chief and I was mayor, and we went all through the NIMS training, we had the council go through it too, because at that time it was recommended.
Yeah.
Because I remember we had Mary Grant's marker and...
We did it right over here.
Yeah.
Because that's the first responders to ever get it, it's over there.
Oh, that was the, uh...
It's fairly, I mean, within two to three hours, I'm sure you'll have what we need. Uh, but it's just more so of an informational, hey, make sure we do have this, keep up the data, if there's any issues in the future, we qualify. Um, there's...
I don't think there is any training scheduled.
No, no, just, I wanted to see who for sure had it, and just so we are aware that we need to...
All of us here except Matt have it. No, I do.
It would be Gina and Scott.
I just have it.
Well, there you go, and just Gina.
Which ones do you have stuff, do you know?
I have one, two, the seven, right, Leon?
I don't have it. You guys said that before, I want to know.
Oh, pre you.
It's pre me.
One, two, and seven and eight.
I think I have one.
I want to say probably...
I have one for the Fire Department.
One or two and maybe one upper one would probably be the requirements. Um, I tried finding that, I couldn't get enough resources in the ring, but, um, as long as a couple of us are, is what it comes down to, meeting the mayor and the city admin. But I just wanted to inform you guys that...
Just how to access the emergency response, um, programs and, and talk about how it, how it works and, and different type of logistics to that and things of that nature. So, it, it's very good information. Um, I'm not sure when and if they'll ever offer one at two, seven, and eight. Um, I think they may even be into the five and six hundred, so.
We can do it all, it's all over again. It's, um, it's not, it means, it's just more so time consuming, I guess, but, uh, once again, it was just to inform that we stay on track of that if there would ever be a, a future disaster within our city limits that we...
Do you have that to Eric?
Yeah, I'm sure he does, yeah. It's real life fire stuff.
Thanks for the update there, Scott. Uh, there is a inspection workshop.
I got this from the Coney. Um, I believe Matt was part of this, we're gonna have to re, kind of, design this. Yeah. Um, but they do have a workshop at the Coney coming up in March eighteenth. Um, I just want to present it to you guys, you're aware of it, we need to kind of restructure that board, I would assume.
Yeah, with Matt going off, we'll need another individual to sit in on that board. So, um, we'll get those appointments, um, in place when Gina takes office, because she'll have several boards that she's gonna be sitting on as well, so, um, Gina, I'll get together with you before the next meeting and roll over some things and see what you feel comfortable with, you know, throughout the first year, year and a half, being, uh, weighing down heavy, so. Uh, Coney Assessor's office is gonna be here, we have our Board Equalization, Field Equalization training, uh, actually, update, it's not a training, it's our annual, um, so if anybody has that training, who's got it? Uh, Matt, you, Don, Mike?
No, I, I don't have it.
Okay, so let's be, Mike, no, you.
Yeah. So, two of us have to be here.
Uh, one.
Or, yeah, it's just one.
Yeah, just one has to be.
Just one with the training, yes.
Yeah, I've, uh, I've always been here, somebody...
Yeah, I know, I said...
I thought we had a problem one time because there weren't two people here, you were off someplace and we had to call and get you here, because there were two of you here with the training.
Uh, could be.
I want to say that you're right, Steph, I think that two people do need to be...
No.
They don't?
Okay.
Well, what day did the, the Coney pick?
Uh, April twenty-ninth, one o'clock.
Which is a Wednesday at one o'clock here at City Hall.
And I tell you, you're ready that I won't be here. Donnie, be around?
I think I should be.
Okay, I'll be around for it. Actually, I need the council members to come, it's, uh, very informational, and, uh, yeah, I'd encourage you to be there. Scott, we have some NJPA.
So, just some of the trainings that I've been attending lately, um, just as an update, I guess, um, if we do provide, if we do take the training that is provided from National Joint Powers Alliance, um, we are awarded credit for buying when we purchase through them, so we are actually at a thousand dollars purchasing credit for our next, whatever we're looking at.
Well, that will go up after we do a fire truck too, because that was purchased as NJPA.
Yeah, so we can use that towards purchasing, yes.
Other, other things, it's really a neat deal.
Yeah, anything that we contract and purchase, um, obviously benefits us.
Well, Scott, you've got like a five hundred dollar credit just for attending that.
Like attending one of their trainings, and people, Eric and I attended, we got a five hundred dollar credit for staying there. So, we're at, we're at a thousand, there's another one coming up here in the spring again that will be able to, uh, get awarded a, so just as an update to, to the council for that.
See, there's some League of Minnesota training.
Um, Bob and I would like to, are, are planning to attend, um, the training is in your packets. I'm actually gonna take the morning agenda, which I believe is the second one, I apologize for that, I'm gonna actually take the police trap, which is dealing with complaints, challenges, and claims. Um, it would benefit me a lot for what's going on within the city, um, city building. Um, and then Bob is gonna take one as well, and our request is that, it's in St. Cloud that we can use the city truck to go to the training. Um, I'm looking at the calendar, it's in the beginning of April. And we'll be going to the morning sessions, and it's provided from, provided to us from the League of Minnesota Cities.
Mm-hmm.
So, but like I said, I'm gonna attend the police track on, and then I think Bob is, I'm just gonna take all the works for it.
Yeah, no, I think the more of this stuff you can get, and to be up on this stuff and what the league recommendations are, um, on how we go about handling some of this information, I mean, that's why we're members.
When did you say it?
Say it's like the fourth or twelve or something, April. Um, I don't have it on me right now, it was on for the Saturday, it's the sixth or seventh. But we requested to take, uh, all the works truck down there.
Yeah, go ahead, unless you guys got a problem with it.
Probably will make the play jump at the same time.
Citywide cleanup day?
I think Bob can help one a little bit with this as well.
Oh, we're resetting.
We run, kind of run the same agenda as we did last year, nine to eleven at Pioneer Elementary. Um, the only difference would be, certain electronics would be ten dollars instead of five, so monitors, TVs, and laptops will go up to ten dollars.
Wow, okay. Uh, what's the date on that?
On May second.
Yes.
And then we also have a scrap iron person available to take scrap iron, and garbage.
I guess just to let the public be aware as well, um, they do not take paper or paint cans during that citywide cleanup, just because of the transport, we don't have a vehicle licensed to transport it to recycle, so.
Yeah, all the paint cans, things that may turn you to be cleaned off empty.
Correct, but I guess from a...
Even, even empty, it's hazardous waste, you gotta have the right...
The right transportation, so I guess from a paper standpoint, just to make people aware that you can't bring those in. But I'll also be running, running ads in the paper and stuff like that, just so we, just so we know the people choose.
Did you get a reason, Bob, as to why they increased? I mean, it's cost them more to dispose of it.
Costs them more to get rid of it, whatever's in there.
You know, we took in quite a bit of TVs and stuff last year, too. There's a lot of electronics.
So, maybe we can advertise that change somehow, too, that notice of the change. So, it's ten dollars.
Five bucks. I mean, people want to get rid of stuff, they're gonna pay to get rid of it.
Yeah, they have stairs on it.
Yeah, you put it all on the main street, put a force signal sign on it, and hope somebody steals it.
One place where the guy was taking TVs and that stuff, because he had enough, he got enough salvage out of it, as far as metals, different metals in there, and he was taking a ton of them out. I don't know what all metals are in there, but they're very, some of the metals are getting more expensive. Maybe we have to find it.
Good retirement job for you, Leon.
Yeah, right.
Uh, next item on our agenda is our resolution two-two-three-two-zero, uh, fifteen dash zero-one, and that is our city clerk position.
This will be the last one that Matt has to read.
Mm-hmm.
You can read that, of course.
Yeah.
You don't have to read that.
Uh, yes, please, Matt.
Resolution number zero-two-two-three-two-zero-one-five-dash-zero-one approving appointment of city clerk open position. Be it resolved that Gina Funk is hereby appointed to the office of the Pierce City Clerk and shall serve out the remaining unexpired term of the city clerk position until the qualification of a successor at the next general election of the city. Be it further resolved that the city of Pierce hereby approves Gina Funk for Pierce City Clerk, I certify that the above resolution was adopted by the Pierce City Council on February twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen.
Very good. Get a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make.
I'll make that motion. Motion on the floor by Mike.
I'll second that.
Second by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carried unanimously.
She can't run out no more.
Thank you for taking the time to apply, Gina.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
I'm sure you'll do a great job.
Bye.
Matt, thanks a ton.
Yeah, absolutely.
You've done a hell of a job, but we're losing you prematurely, but...
Yeah, yeah, it's, um, it's unfortunate, I know I really like serving, um, for the city, and I couldn't imagine a better group of people to work with, and, uh, yeah, I really enjoyed it, it was something, um, I knew I would enjoy it, but I didn't know I would enjoy it that much, I really, really, I love it.
So now we'll hear on the news that you're gonna be, uh, running for the council out in Vegas.
Yeah, right. Yeah. No, I don't, I don't know about the, yeah, but, mayor. Okay.
But thanks again for everything, Matt.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So Toby has an update, that we will search Gina in on the night.
Yep.
Should be effective after the night, and has it tomorrow, the twenty-fourth, and I do believe it'll be some...
Yep.
Gotta sign all your papers tonight, or tomorrow.
Nope, send them tonight.
We have some department reports, uh, Bob, anything going on in public works?
Nothing further.
Been slow? Not slow, but...
Yeah, a little bit of snow here and there, still doing the skating rinks. Did our training today, some of our, uh, early training, safety training videos, so...
Some of our mandatories?
Yeah.
Just getting that all squared away. Dan, you make it to those?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we got, uh, all of our employee right to know, our blood and airborne pathogens, confined spaces, all that good stuff, you guys make sure you get up on that.
We have to run everybody through that golf course.
They are, yep, that's...
You know, if we have any new ones too, and...
So, they, and they are up to date, everyone is up to date, it's just the process of...
Annual, hanging on it. Yep. Chief?
I don't have nothing, monthly reports aren't funny, nothing great out there until Army to the council, but I'm really smooth as of this time. Public's really liking them, speed radar signs, it's a big hit right now, which has been moving around.
Yeah, it's our night.
It's a good success, so.
Little pal, thank you.
It's good that you moved around, because, uh, I have had people saying, "I was here last week, where'd it go this weekend?"
I'm not looking for them.
Good, thanks for the report, Eric.
You're welcome.
Scotty?
Can you skip me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan. I'm not used to being here every night.
I figured I could do that.
Sounds good.
Well, we cut down about thirty trees this winter, um, tree pine, a couple oaks, and then the rest are more Chinese elm, elm ash, trunk trees, a lot on the edge, so it wasn't a lot on the course, so we don't have a lot of stumps to grind, which is good. Um, redid the picnic tables, um, we repolstered all the rip seats and the golf carts.
Good.
Took care of the ball washers, um, that good stuff, we're gonna take, uh, the rough mower apart tomorrow, and see if we can get another year out of that, so, that's part of our lot more information.
Yeah, good.
Or, we're, yeah, I bet we're gonna take that bike tomorrow.
Good.
Yeah, we're starting on...
I don't have my pager.
Starting machinery, look over this week, and just marking along there, so.
We have a park board meeting.
We have a park board next Monday to talk about more of the particular stuff.
Okay, we'll be long, the, uh, which will be starting, I hope?
I know, stopped in the, Paul, at Eastside Jason Grubers, I need to do it, he just keeps pushing it out, I don't know if he's got other stuff, whatever, but he promises it will be done before we open, so.
Okay.
Paul Secal's got everything at the, you know, all the brackets done and all, so basically it's just ready to go whenever Jason gets to it.
Nice.
Cut the pipe, which was a little disappointing to get out of the way, but we'll figure it out, I mean, put it back together when they're done, so.
Yeah.
Um, and I did talk to Tri-City, and they'll make it work with the tar too this spring, since they get to it, so everything's on schedule to be done.
Good, good.
As special.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to, uh, seeing that when it's done, it's gonna be a nice addition.
Yeah, for sure, that definitely will be, so. I actually just called up Tom Stahl, because Paul forgot to pick the shingle collar, so I figured, I'm the Stahl family, so.
Okay.
So, that's all I have here, so. Other than that, that's pretty much the general update, what we're looking at this winter.
Okay, so are we looking at, for help?
I haven't called any of them yet, just, it's usually called too early, they don't know, maybe I'll call everybody before the park board meeting and get an idea, so.
Yeah, we may have to, I forget.
Just get a feel.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about more of the particular fines at the park board, I guess.
Sure.
Brings in all that good stuff, so, other than that, that's all we got.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Scotty?
Um, I just have one quick update. Um, I know I approached you guys this once before, and if you got a fire meeting, I guess, yeah, about Unibinder, for doing all types of our employee handbooks, like with the Fire Department, I always, they've just brought on four of the members, we don't have nothing to put together, reports, any reports, I know Bob can use this, Eric can use it, I spoke to them both, I can use it for definitely one thing, is employee handbooks.
Okay, good.
Um, but just, uh, Toby, if you actually go ahead and just pull the papers out, you can actually grab the papers as one and pull them out.
Oh, yeah.
Grab the whole unit out, and then what happens is, that plastic casing is just one unit, and it comes with a binder thing where you, it's a little machine that actually melts that adhesive, so I can put a report together, grab that thing, slide up the machine, and adheses it together, and it creates a binder, I mean, it's, I can make a report then. And then I can actually, if I need to update them, I can actually melt that adhesive, slide them in again, and melt them down again, is adequate for more, more two times, depending how big the report is. Um, with that being said, the machine isn't exactly cheap, it is four hundred dollars for the machine and two hundred dollars for two hundred binders, I can get a number of different sizes, so it's six hundred dollars altogether for the unit. Um, I think it would be a, a good fit for what we use it for, um, so I guess I just was looking for your opinions, um, as far as...
I guess, do you have it in your budget for the year, which I know you do?
Yeah, um, the biggest thing would be is just, the biggest thing would be, uh, for employee handbooks, I mean, we need to be very professional when it comes to that, we need to make sure those things are signed in in their hand and it stays together, um, so.
Fire Department gives them, we get a red binder, free binder, I don't know.
Yes, and where I could get a bigger one of these, and I can actually adhesive together, it's a decent report. Also, um, for any reports that Eric does, like I said, uh, but another thing too, just to kind of justify the cost, we do have a fee schedule to everyone else, all the community members.
That's what I was just gonna bring up, somebody wants to...
For these, and it's a little over a buck, um, so, I mean, I, I know people would use these if they were, but I just wanted to get your opinions first, um, your, your insight.
If it's something you think you're gonna need, or something you think you're gonna use, and if the community members want to take advantage of it for a small fee, um, to help absorb the cost, certainly don't have a problem.
And I, I mean, I remember for school reports, you know, to, um, what is the place called? I can't remember, anyway, it's not in St. Cloud, but, uh, for doing binding and stuff like that, I mean, we have it right here.
Kind of place.
So, but...
Kinko.
Kinko's, yes, um, but it is six hundred dollars altogether, so, I mean, that's, but it...
I would say we're gonna recover costs out of it over the years, and I can see community businesses using it, or...
If, for all of our annual reports, I mean, Bob and I put together like the Solid Waste Meeting, I mean, we could put together a report if it's big enough, and, you know, I mean, or all of Eric's stuff, or if Bob wants to report...
A whole wide arsenal, can you get, let's say, can you get a...
You can get a real, you can fit over a hundred pages if we need to.
Okay, okay, so we can get a city handbook for...
Yeah, that's the main reason I want them, and redo that, and something legitimate that we can handle for...
Okay.
Because right now for the Fire Department, I put them in three ring binders, um, but that's more, yeah, so, but, do you think it's...
Do you think you'd have a different fee if somebody comes in and they only want ten pages in there, and all of a sudden now they want a fifty-page binder?
We have, we have so much, I'll be anywhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, but even like, I mean, look at all the people that we worked with, with, uh, um, the industrial park, I mean, working on business plans, like, here you go, even for like the Sheraton factory, they just have stable, you know, I mean...
We need to update our EDA.
Correct.
And that would be a nice thing that we could print up ten of, I'm the member.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of things we can use it for.
I'd be in favor of that.
That's nice to be able to file something that's small like that, do instead of a three-ring binder.
It stays together, it's kind of nice, hearty, plastic cover, um, so...
Yeah, as long as we would offer the service to the public, um... Yeah, as long as we would offer the service to the public, um, try and remove a little bit of the cost and, and also have that service available for the public.
That's one of the main reasons I think we have it for, because we don't have anything like that. Um, after that, that's pretty much all, I have, everything else is up on the agenda.
Anybody else have anything? Scott will be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I made a motion to adjourn.
Motion on the floor from Matt.
I'll second that.
Second by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you, everybody.